Order for its regular meeting at the time. And places advertised. Next order of business is our pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in our pledge.
Thank you.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So bright. I know. We'll go back to darker.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. People need to see us.
Our next item of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for individuals who wishing to comment on the gender other matters may bring to the council's attention, including those scheduled for a public hearing. We have some of those tonight, as there may not be another opportunity to comment. Once an agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. And I don't see anyone unless Michelle has citizen comments tonight. She does not, then we will keep moving. That brings us to Roman number four, our presentations. Item A, introduction of new parks and recreation director, introducing Justin Glenn, the new Parks Recreation Director. So, Director, I'll say welcome. Yes, that would be very good if you introduce yourself for the record and then tell us a little bit about yourself, introduce your family, and what else? Am I missing anything or something else? I don't think so. Okay, welcome.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Justin Glenn. I'm your new Parks and Rec Director for City of Lewiston. Just real quick, it's my son Wallace and his mother Sarah, and we are very happy to be here in the valley, moving from Fort Bragg, North Carolina. I finished up a career in Parks and Recreation within the military arena, so I deferred to took the deferred retirement option and said, hey, I need to try my hand at something different and have a little bit more impact locally. So I'm bringing up 20-plus years of Parks and Rec experience. My emphasis is usually on programs, program development at every age echelon that we can get at, and then also project management, so infrastructure needs, requirements within the industry of Parks and Recreation. So I'm really looking forward to bringing some of that experience here and also just learning about the city assets and what the community wants to see as well. So, thank you so much for having me.
Well, Justin, we're very excited to have you here. I know that. Counselors, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to ask Justin or share with the family tonight?
Just like to say, welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir.
Glad you're here. Glad your family came to see how it goes. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. He might have went back if he didn't.
Yeah. And I'm going to yield my time to the next person, I think, more enjoyable than me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, item B, introduction of new police canine, introducing the newest member, the Police Department's Canine Unit. Now let Captain Reese introduce this newest member. Welcome, Captain.
Yeah. Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, my name is Chris Reese. I'm the field operations captain for the Police Department. As such, I have the great opportunity to oversee our canine program, and I'm happy to introduce our newest four-legged party. You guys have already seen him breathing and hearing him in the background. This is Canine Quincy. Canine Quincy is our newest drug detection canine, so he's trained to alert to the odors that emanate from methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, marijuana, and soon we're going to implement him on fentanyl as well. Our current canine is trained on those four odors in addition to fentanyl. Our plan is to implement fentanyl also on Canine Quincy. But several months back, Chief Guzic and our own grant writer, Melinda Rose, they applied for a grant through the Department of Justice. We were fortunate to be rewarded that grant, and the sole purpose was to bring on a second canine to our current program. And so all the proceeds of that grant have gone to the purchase prize for Canine Quincy. The four-week school that this is Officer Vanover, by the way, I'm sorry. We're commonly known as the dumb, dumb, dumb people on the end of the leash. Officer Vanover is Canine Quincy's handler. So the proceeds from the grant, the purchase of the dog, the four-week school that Officer Vanover and Canine Quincy went through, equipment, home kennels, things, things of that nature. So we're very fortunate for those people who participated in that grant so that we can be able to bring on a second canine into our program that I've been trying to do for many, many years now, so it's good to see it.
Thank you, Captain Reese. Officer Vanover, do you have anything to share with us? Any words? Or Quincy?
We've been working for about two weeks now. We've already had three successful deployments. Very happy. He's awesome in the car, doesn't barge, just lays down and chill, so he's a very sweet lab.
So, yeah, we've only had him in service for a couple of weeks now, and they've, what, meth? Did you find anything else other than meth?
Yeah, meth, marijuana.
Yeah, meth, marijuana. So, yeah. Yeah, we're already seeing the fruits of that.
He's doing really good.
Yep.
And he's obsessed with me.
Officer Vanover, could you just share with all of us here, just, you know, in two minutes or less, about your life with Quincy? Because I think you spend a lot of time with each other, don't you?
Oh, yes. Yes, he lives with me. He rides in the car with me. He's with me all the time. He enjoys being at home. He, I'm not sure that he's a lab yet, though, because he doesn't like the water. When the sprinklers come on, he cries. Yep, when we're at home, he either stays in the kennel inside or outside. We go on walks. And then at work, he stays in the back of the kennel the whole time, unless we're in the PD, and all the officers and the dispatchers love him and love to give him loves.
Well, I think Counselor Klein has an announcement to make.
I have some puppy treats for Quincy.
Oh, that's great. I'm sharing the love.
Those are for you.
Eat your treat.
Well, they're not just, you made those, I think.
I did. Freeze-dried beef organs, so they're super healthy. Haven't had an angry customer yet.
Don't let him knock you off the steps.
I'll give Officer Vanover a little plug here, because there's kind of a common saying in the canine world, after the first year, you either want to do it for the rest of your career because you love it so much, or you're so frustrated that you want to just give up your leash and move on to doing something else. And clearly, just from working with Officer Vanover, she's going to be doing it for a long time, so we're very, very fortunate to have her and have Quincy on board with us now.
So I think Quincy's hitting on something.
He blows the tension.
Like his handle.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Reese. Thank you, Officer Vanover and Quincy. Thank you for sharing some time with us tonight. We appreciate it. Yeah, and thank you, Counselor Klein, for those homemade doggy treats.
Wow. I feel like Ziva got the short end of the stick. Got to get her. And what's, what's Ziva's owner?
Your life's lost.
Yeah, we need to get them in here, too, so they can get the spotlight as well.
Thank you, Captain Reese.
Thanks for coming.
Next item is the financial reports for April 2025, and Director Gordon is here, but she does not tend to give a oral presentation. You have those reviewed. If you have questions, otherwise, we will move on to our public hearings. Okay, we'll move to Roman number five, public hearings and related action items. Item A is a public hearing on zoning code amendments GA-03-25, accepting testimony on zoning code amendments GA-03-25, which has definitions for preschool facility and school. Remove preschool as a conditional use in various zoning districts by amending sections 37-20, 37-28, 37-36, 37-44, and 37-51, and update section 37-20.1 regarding special conditions applicable to mortuaries, churches, schools, daycares, and preschool. This is an action item. We have our Assistant City Planner with us here, Katie Hollingshead. Katie, welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Council. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner. And are you going to open my public hearing?
Counsel, again, the hearing is on zoning code amendments GA-03-25. Here's how the hearing process will work. We'll open the public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation, testimony from the public, if any. And Counsel, you can ask questions. No additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed, so that will be your time. If you have any questions, if we have any members of the public that wish to provide testimony, you'll have three minutes to do that. I'll close the public hearing after that. So with that, all the public hearing open and turned over to Ms. Hollingshead.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And so in front of you tonight is ordinance 4944. This is an ordinance amending a couple of different sections of city code regarding preschool facilities. So currently, in city code, preschool facilities are, one, not defined, and, two, are required to have a conditional use permit in residential zones. They are allowed by right in several commercial zones, and we had an application come in for a standalone preschool, and during that process, going to the conditional use permit process with that applicant, staff looked at the code, and it didn't make sense for why schools would be allowed by right, but preschools are not allowed by right. So that's what this code amendment does. It would allow preschools to operate in the same zones that schools are allowed to operate. It does make a small, schools are required to meet a couple of different special condition criteria, so preschools will be required to meet those same criteria. There is an amendment to that criteria for the mailed notice, matching up the distance of the mailed notice to what we mailed for a public hearing. So that's why there is that change in that portion of the code. But otherwise, it just, it moves preschools into that same sort of category as a regular K through 12 school. And so we would allow them in all the same zones that schools are currently allowed and would re, so there's so many sections, because then you're removing it from that conditional use section in each of those same zones, because then it would be allowed by right. That is what is in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Katie. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, does this, what if any complications or complexities would this add for someone trying to open a preschool?
It would reduce complexities, because you would no longer have to go through that conditional use permit process, which does require some time, and then a public hearing in front of our planning and zoning commission.
Perfect.
It would take less, less complicated.
Thank you.
Counselor Klein?
My only question, comment, whatever, I asked, I asked Ms. Hollingshead early today, earlier today, but, um, so my concern was that preschool, like the definition of preschool seems really similar to either a daycare already or a school, and why you couldn't just combine, you know, combine it with one or the other, just to simplify and clear, I better clarify things.
So currently, there's not a definition for either school or preschool in code. That doesn't exist in our current Lewiston city code. A lot of times, preschools are secondary to, like, a daycare center, which if a daycare center is in a residential zone, that does require a conditional use permit, and then the preschool portion of that would be considered a secondary use to the primary, which would be the daycare center. I think the idea around providing a definition is to separate those so that people aren't trying to say that any old thing is a preschool, and instead are just operating like an infant daycare center or something else. In most places that I've found, in doing research to kind of come up with a definition for school, school itself is normally kind of centered around that K through 12 educational kind of span. And so we thought it would be important to define preschool separately from that.
Counselor Forssman?
I'm understanding usually two preschools are usually held to some kind of curriculum requirements as far as what they put into their daycare preschool.
It depends on how they're licensed. If they go through certain programs to the state, then I would say the answer is yes. The city does not do any of that.
Doesn't require that. And then on the, do they still have to, if they're going to open a preschool up in the area, do they still have to let the people around know? I think I read that in here, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes, that's one of those special conditions. So much like a school, so if a new school went in, so say the Lewiston School District wanted to open a new elementary school, they would have to follow that special conditions section. And one of those is that they notify property owners within 330 feet of whichever address that they want to open the school at, of their plan to do that, because of things like traffic, noise, congestion, infrastructure needs, things like that.
Can you just explain real, maybe quickly, between the conditional use permit versus like a special use, what's the process?
Special conditions?
Yeah.
Special conditions, okay. So you have a conditional use. That means you can only do that use in that zone with permission, basically, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So a conditional use permit application has a fee, and a public hearing is held. And as part of that public hearing, staff writes a staff report, kind of going through all the pros, cons, pieces of the comprehensive plan, surrounding land uses, transportation, road network. We look at a lot of different things, right? And so as part of that, the public is invited to come and provide comment, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission goes through specific criteria to determine whether or not that conditional use permit should be approved. And so there's a lot of discussion in those public hearings, and they go through each of those criteria and decide that, yes, to meet the criteria, or no, you do not meet the criteria, but you're mitigating, however, you're not meeting that criteria. And they go through all those different things. And then that, we call it a reasoned statement, so that's all the reasons for either approving or denying, then that gets recorded against the property so that that can continue to operate at that specific property. A special conditions is not an application, there's no fee. We do do a mailing similar to that, that we would do for a public hearing, but if no one was to, we'll say, object, then you would just move on, and there's not an additional fee, there's not anything additional that you, as that applicant, would be doing. Staff would do that mailing, letting people know that this is what's being proposed at this location. And then if no one objects, then you would just move along in your process of getting building permits, or whatever it is that you need to do to make this site suitable for that use. And so, and that's, those special conditions apply to a couple of different things in code. Schools are one of them, preschools would become one of them. And so that, that process gets used for a couple of different types of businesses in residential zones, mostly.
Counselor Forssman?
And if there's an objection, I would assume it just falls kind of similar to the conditional use.
Then you would go into that conditional use process, where basically you're having to provide more information than just, I want to do this. In that conditional use permit process, we're showing pictures of the site, we're showing what your plans are for the site, how you're going to do traffic, how you're going to have a parking lot, how people are going to get in and out. There's a lot more information that's contained.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further comments, and I didn't. I presume, again, that there was no one here from the public to testify, but I'll just make sure not. With that, then we will close the public hearing on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, next, we move to item B, first reading ordinance 4944. Considering amending Lewiston City Code section 37-3 to add the definition of preschool facility and school, amending Lewiston City Council or Lewiston City Code sections 37-19, 37-27, 37-35, 37-43, and 30-37-51, allowing a preschool as a permitted use in various zoning districts, amending Lewiston City Code sections 37-20, 37-28, 37-36, 37-44, and 37-51, removing a preschool as a condition in various zoning districts. Again, this is an action item, our Assistant City Planner. Counsel, otherwise, I'd introduce a motion. Counsel President Kleberg?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 4944.
Second.
Moved by Counsel President Kleberg, second by Counsel Schröder to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4944. Is there discussion or amendments? And those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Harris. Counselor Rocky?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4944. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code section 37, the definition of preschool facility. 19, 30, 27, 7, 5, 37, 43, 37, allowing a permit in various districts. Amending Lewiston City Code sections 37-20, 37-28, 37-36, 37-44, and 37-51, removing a preschool as a conditional use in various zoning districts. Amending Lewiston City Code 37-20 dot one, related to the special conditions applicable to mortuaries, churches, schools, daycares, and preschools, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, next up, we have item C, public hearing on zoning code amendment GA-02-25, accepting testimony on zoning code amendment GA-020-25, which proposes to amend the definition of single-family dwelling. Again, this is an action item. We have our Assistant City Planner with us here, Katie Hollingshead. I will open the public hearing. We'll hear from Katie, and then we'll accept testimony from the public if there is any. Again, Counsel, that will be your opportunity to ask questions. No additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed, so that is your time to speak up. After that, we will close the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Katie Hollingshead. Thank you, Katie.
Counsel, Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner, and so ZA-02-25, and this is ordinance 4947. This is just changing, adding to two definitions in our zoning code. The first one adds tiny house to our definition of single-family dwellings. Currently, tiny houses are excluded from that definition and are defined separately. And so anywhere, as it currently stands, anywhere that a single-family dwelling would be allowed, a tiny house would not necessarily be allowed because it's excluded from that definition. So this adds that into that definition, which would allow for someone to put a tiny house, which is a 400-square-foot or smaller home, on a single residential lot in any of our residential zoning districts. And then the second part of the, we'll say, we'll say the fix to the definitions, is also amending our definition of recreational vehicle to include park models. Park models are similar to a tiny home, where they're 399 square feet or less, and that is in response to an update to Idaho code, so that our code more closely matches Idaho code when talking about recreational vehicles. And those are the two. That's all this is.
Thank you, Katie. Is there any testimony from the public tonight?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4947.
This is a public hearing, Counsel, so we're not quite there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item C, but we'll get to you. Thank you.
All right. Trying to help a little.
You are. And we appreciate that. Further counsel comments? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, what, what is a park model? Is this a good?
So a park model is kind of like a standalone trailer. It's 399 square feet. You can tow it, but most of the time, people just place them in, like, RV parks and use them for longer-term, like, summer homes or vacation homes.
Gotcha. So, like a trailer?
Yep. Similar. It's like a manufactured home, just much smaller. So it's like a tiny, single-wide manufactured home.
Gotcha.
But it's 399 square feet or smaller.
And this would be one single unit on residential property, not multiples on?
So the park model is specific to the definition under recreational vehicle, so those aren't allowed to be set up as homes. I mean, maybe you could do a park model, as long as you put it on a permanent foundation, because then it would technically qualify as a tiny home.
Okay.
So a tiny home is just defined, like, based on size, and then International Residential Code does have certain requirements for, like, how you would stick built one. I would imagine that we could include a park model in that, because it would meet those dimensional standards. I don't know for sure if a park model comes with a HUD certification, which is when you're talking about, so like, RVs have one kind of inspection, and it's not the same standard as, like, a stick-built house or a manufactured home. Like, a manufactured home has HUD inspections, certifying that everything is down to the different safety codes. So State of Idaho and the City of Lewiston accept manufactured homes as long as they have that HUD placard and meet certain criteria. I don't know for sure that a park model is inspected in that same manner when they're created in a factory, which is why they're probably under the RV definition and not under the single-family dwelling definition.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, they're different things, and they're, they're built at different standards.
Gotcha. So they would still, even with this change of park model in, under the recreational vehicles, that wouldn't mean somebody could put it, just a trailer with no foundation at all on?
No.
Okay.
No, we follow the Idaho State Guidelines for manufactured home sets, so they have to meet those standards.
Gotcha. And just one more.
Counsel Wright?
Thank you. And on the tiny houses, that'd be one per property. If they were trying to chop up that 10,000 square feet and put three or four, that would be something different, is that?
Correct, yeah. Because they would still follow whatever zone you're in, you're going to meet the minimum standards for your lot size, your minimum dimensional standards. It doesn't change any of that. It just changes, this is another housing type you could put on a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Trying to help move it along.
You are. And we appreciate that. Further counsel comments? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, what, what is a park model? Is this a good?
So a park model is kind of like a standalone trailer. It's three hundred and ninety-nine square feet. You can tow it, but most of the time, people just place them in like RV parts and use them for longer term, like summer homes or vacation homes.
Gotcha. So, like a trailer?
Yep. Similar. It's like a manufactured home, just much smaller. So it's like a tiny, single-wide manufactured home.
Gotcha.
But it's three hundred and ninety-nine square feet or smaller.
And this would be one single unit on residential property, not multiples on?
So the park model is specific to the definition under recreational vehicle. So those aren't allowed to be set up as homes. I mean, maybe you could do a park model as long as you put it on a permanent foundation, because then it would technically qualify as a tiny home.
Okay.
So a tiny home is just defined, like, based on size. And then International Residential Code does have certain requirements for like how you would stick built one. I would imagine that we could include a park model in that because it would meet those dimensional standards. I don't know for sure if a park model comes with a HUD certification, which is when you're talking about, so like RVs have one kind of inspection, and it's not the same standard as like a stick-built house or a manufactured home. Like a manufactured home has HUD inspections, certifying that everything is down to the different safety codes. So, state of Idaho and the city of Lewiston accept manufactured homes as long as they have that HUD placard and meet certain criteria. I don't know for sure that a park model is inspected in that same manner when they're created in a factory, which is why they're probably under the RV definition and not under the single-family dwelling definition.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, they're different things, and they're, they're built at different standards.
Gotcha. So they would still, even with this change of park model in, under the recreational vehicles, that wouldn't mean somebody could put it, just a trailer with no foundation at all on?
No.
Okay.
No, we follow the Idaho State Guidelines for manufactured home sets. So they have to meet those standards.
Gotcha. And just one more.
Counsel Wright?
Thank you. And on the tiny houses, that'd be one per property. If they were trying to chop up that ten thousand square feet and put three or four, that would be something different, is that?
Correct, yeah. Because they would still follow whatever zone you're in. You're going to meet the minimum standards for your lot size, your minimum dimensional standards. It doesn't change any of that. It just changes, this is another housing type you could put on a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, counsel, if there's no further questions. Close the public hearing on that. Thank you, Katie. Counsel, we'll next move to item D. First reading of ordinance forty-nine forty-seven. Considering amending Lewiston City Code Section thirty-seven dash three relating to the definition of dwelling and amending Lewiston City Code Section twenty-three dash twenty-five relating to the definition of recreational vehicle. This is an action item. Counsel Schroeder?
Thank you. And I think this is where I say I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number four-nine four-seven.
The move by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel President Kleberg to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty-nine forty-seven. Is there discussion or amendments? None. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the first reading of ordinance. Leading to the definition of recreational vehicle.
Clerk Rocky, counsel. Next, we move to Roman numeral six, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council is shown request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The move by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel President Kleberg to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Rocky?
Counsel President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Counsel, thank you, Clerk Rocky. We now move to our active agenda, Roman numeral seven, item A, collective labor agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local one-seven-seven-three. Considering approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lewiston and the International Association of Firefighters, IFF, Local one-seven-seven-three, for October first, twenty-twenty-four to September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. Our human resources director, Nikki Province, is here tonight. Counsel, if you have questions. Maybe I should just turn it over to you, director, and then you could set us up for an action.
Yeah, so Nikki Province, HR Director, City of Lewiston. The copy you have, I just want to point out one minor error that the mayor caught. On page fifty-five, it should read appendix D, city travel policy, not city travel police. So it's not a substantive change, but I just want to put it out there to make sure that we capture that error. But otherwise, yeah, I'm looking to counsel to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the International Association of Firefighters.
Counsel Schroeder?
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lewiston and the International Association of Firefighters, IFF, Local one-seven-seven-three, for October first, twenty-twenty-four to September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with the mod amendment. Oh, it is? Okay. Okay, to execute the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel Forstman, to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lewiston and the International Association of Firefighters, IFF, Local one-seven-seven-three, for October one, twenty-twenty-four to September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Entertain a motion from someone other than the motion maker to make a correction to the spell. Counsel President Kleberg?
I'd make a motion to, did you get page fifty-six right there? To change appendix D to, from city travel police, two thousand twenty-four dash oh three, to city travel policy.
Aye, second.
Moved by Counsel President Kleberg, second by Counsel Schroeder to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lewiston and the International Association of Firefighters, Local one-seven-seven-three. Rocky?
Counsel President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Counsel, now we'll go back to the main motion. The motion was to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Lewiston and the International Association of Firefighters, IFF, Local one-seven-seven-three, for October first, twenty-twenty-four to September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, and authorizing the mayor to execute agreement. Clerk Rocky?
Counsel President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. We will now move to Roman numeral seven, B, on the active agenda, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight, considering approving the Federal Transit Administration FISA year twenty-twenty-five certifications and assurances. This is an action item, and we are going to ask our transit manager, Suzanne Senior, at a minimum, to have her come forward and make, share a few words with us on this item. Thank you.
You bet. Suzanne Senior, Transit Manager. Mayor, counselors, the certs and assurances are the promises we make to the FTA that we will keep in compliance with our transit program. As you can see in the history sheet, we have been agreeing to the certifications and assurances since two thousand and three, when we first accepted money from the FTA for transit purposes. This is an annual event. It's come late this year. Typically, it's early. If you, if we do not have this signed and agreed by, by the council, then we would not be able to receive any of our fifty-three oh seven allocation of funding. If for some reason we were errant in any of the areas of the certifications and assurances, it's typically in our triennial that we work with the FTA. And if we're not egregious, they work with us to make sure we are in compliance. We haven't been egregious yet. And we're asking you to sign again so that we can receive our twenty-twenty-five fifty-three oh seven grant funding.
Thank you, Suzanne. Counsel members, there is quite a number of these assurances. If you didn't get a chance to look over them or read them, I did look at a lot of them, and Suzanne and I work together on this once or twice a year. We make sure we get everything right, so.
And for those areas that we do not have, for instance, school buses on there and charter services, for those areas that we do not participate, we're not held accountable to those, obviously.
Counselors, do you have questions? Change of motions?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Forstman, second by Counsel President Kleberg to resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Clerk Rocky?
Counsel President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Aries, thank you, counsel. Next, we move to item C, Federal Transit Administration FTA five-three-three-nine, statewide funding agreement, number twenty-five seventy-nine LT. Considering approving the grant agreement between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of two hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred forty dollars for the purchase of two light-duty buses, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Again, this is an action item, and we have our transit manager with us here. Ben, please, welcome.
Your counselors, we sought for, so our ability to get buses, we typically get funding first. This is fifty-three thirty-nine funding. That's the name of the grant program, and it's offered through ITD. I applied a year and a half ago for this funding, knowing that what our regular cycle for turning over buses are. As you can see, we are disposing or wanting to dispose of two buses that have met their path, had passed their useful life in a big way, one of them, for sure. They're both two thousand and nine models, one with two hundred and fifty-nine thousand and the other with over three hundred thousand miles. So they get very expensive once they get old to maintain. So it's in our best interest to just spend our, what we would spend on keeping those buses alive, on the local match for new buses. So our intention is to order two buses, very much like the two we received, that are working super well. They're quieter than our other buses. We've gotten a lot of compliments from them. We brought them onto the fixed route. We're going to smaller buses. We plan on buying two very similar. And we do have the funding already set aside. We set aside depreciation every year, so we have the funding set aside already in Fleet's budget.
Counsel Forstman?
When is the ETA on the, if we go through this, through this and approve, when's the ETA on the new buses?
Yeah, it's typically a year to fifteen months.
Okay, okay. Will it hit, it'll hit twenty, twenty-five years' budget, though?
It always does, and then it rolls over amendment to twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel President Kleberg?
I was just looking at you.
Well, I didn't finish my sentence. Stop looking at me. Counselor Schroeder?
I move, I make a motion to approve the grant agreement between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Did I do that right? And authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel Forstman, to approve the grant agreement between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of two hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Clerk Rocky?
Counsel President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Aries, thank you, counsel. Thank you. I'll go too far.
I'm going to ask Director Gro to take the stand with you and maybe share just a little more information with the council real quick, like.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Shannon Gro, Community Development Director of the city. I just wanted Suzanne. I wanted you to know this is her last council meeting. She's retiring Friday, and I just wanted to say a few words with the help of ChatGPT, if I may. And I'll try to get through it. She's a dear, dear friend of mine. Suzanne has served our community with dedication, integrity, and heart since two thousand and sixteen. As a leader in our transit department, you might have to read this. Over the years, she's shown herself to be not just a committed public servant, but one who understands the balance between fiscal responsibility and community needs, a rare and valuable quality in any organization and one we have deeply appreciated. Under Suzanne's guidance, our transit services have grown smarter, more accessible, and more responsive. Just recently, she led the launch of a new on-demand service in North Lewiston, a game-changer for residents who rely on flexible, reliable transportation. She also oversaw the implementation of a new dispatch software, modernizing our operations and ensuring smoother coordination, smoother coordination across the board. And let's not forget the new transit stop at the community center, a project made possible in part by city funding, but championed from the start by Suzanne. And the city only paid three percent of that total cost, and that is huge in this kind of time of cutting funding. These are just a few of her recent accomplishments, but they reflect a career filled with practical solutions and visionary leadership. Suzanne never sought the spotlight. She let her work speak for itself, and I wanted this moment to speak for her, as this is her last. So please join me in thanking Suzanne for her service. We will miss you so much.
Counsel, I'm going to share one other secret with you about Suzanne, and maybe some of the staff. But shortly after getting elected mayor, I asked Suzanne to serve on a small group to be a sounding board for me so that I could try to make good decisions. And so, she was one of those individuals that I would go to when I needed some advice or maybe just some feedback on some thoughts I was having. So I've always appreciated your opinion, your thoughts. You're very level-headed and very clear, smart, all of these things. But you are going to be missed, but we'll see you again someday. But I just thank you too for your friendship and help in my role as mayor. So thank you.
Mayor?
Counsel Forstman?
I wanted to also say thank you for your service. You're obviously big shoes to fill when you leave, and I hope you enjoy retirement, though, and it's filled with lots of exciting things. And just the time that I've been on council, you're a go-getter, and you're always bringing new inventive ideas and trying to make sure the community is taken care of. And so, you, I know for a fact, especially by what was just said, you will be missed, and I hope the next person can fill those shoes just as well as you did.
Thank you, Suzanne and Shannon. Counsel, next up, we have item D, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, considering approving an agreement for services between the city of Lewiston and the Lewis Clark Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization for GIS Support Services and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. We have our Community Development Director, Shannon Gro, with us here tonight. If you'd like to hear a little bit more about this, or I'll entertain a motion. Counsel President Kleberg?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved by Counsel President Kleberg, second by Counsel Schroeder to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two. Clerk Rocky?
Counsel President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Director Gro, for your work on that, too. This is a good deal for the city. Item D, IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-six, Fifth Street Reconstruction, Second Avenue to Seventh Avenue, TR zero-seven-four. You can hear the footsteps going already, considering awarding IFB dash twenty-five dash zero-one-six, Second Avenue, Seventh Avenue, TR zero-seven-four, Knight River Corporation, Mountain West, in the amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. This is an action item, and we have our public works director with us here, Dustin Johnson. Welcome, director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I believe the mayor kind of outlined the overall specifics of this project, but the only reason I got up was there was a question today during the budget work session about capital and pavement preservation. This is a pavement preservation project. Pavement preservation is typically high-level, your chip seals, your mill and overlay, and now we're finding some of these other roads that we're digging into deeper that have rotten subbase. This is a unique one. This subbase that's up there right behind us is McAdam, which is turn of the century, the old century, nineteen hundred, early form of asphalt. And what you're finding on that section of third is that what we call, in technical terms, whoopie-doo, where we've cut all the utilities in and patched back, and it, the compaction of the patchback does not match the original McAdam. And so, that's requiring us to go out and mill all of this out and replace it. This wasn't originally on our pavement preservation schedule, but we got good prices on the chip seals and the other work that was bid out early in the spring. So we thought we'd roll the dice, and we got another good bid. This was, what, a hundred and some odd thousand dollars below, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars below engineer's estimate. So it was a good year for our pavement preservation. So with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counsel, Counsel Spickelmeier?
So, Director, just curiosity in this, you said they had to mill it, so by milling it, in other conversations, required ADA compliance and all that. Is this, it already meets it?
There are a couple of sections of flatbacks heard that don't meet it, and I think there might be a couple ramps in there, but generally, this section that we're tearing out does meet it, or it will meet it once we're all said and done, hundred percent. But yeah, you're right. Anything that mill and overlay or greater requires ADA improvements.
Counsel, further questions for Director Johnson? Counsel Klein?
I just have a comment. Thanks for putting the bids in there and their prices, and so we have a comparison of what they were bidding at. I was kind of, I didn't see a map in there, because I know all our streets are kind of crazy and so. I was kind of, I didn't see a map in there, because I know all our streets are kind of crazy, and so trying to see that visual would be really nice.
Okay, yeah, we did, we did that with the, with the other one, but it didn't get included on this one. And just for, for the council and the public's knowledge, when we do these pavement preservation projects, we try and group them together. You know, this last year was a lot of the orchards. This year, we did North Lewiston and then a little bit around here, so don't, don't worry, we're coming back around. We'll be around to hold you up in your drive home in the future.
Counsel Forsman.
What's the temperature? You have to have a certain temperature and environment, right, before you can do these types of stuff?
This one, since it's a reconstruct, the temperature is less, less of an issue. I mean, pavement, it's got to be, I can't remember, it's, it's really cold, but for chip seal, it's usually, it's warm. In fact, I was getting some comments today from the public, and I believe we started on twenty-first today. I think. Somebody was making somebody upset today on Twenty-first Street. I think it was probably that there was two sections on Twenty-first that was chip seal.
Okay, yeah, I know sometimes we get the public wondering why something was being done, and then project had to stop, and then we have to go back to it, and, you know, due to temperatures and where it's at.
We usually wait for the temperatures to get warm enough, and they're going warmer, because then you got, you got a window of opportunity. It's when you start it, and then it rains, and you've got to move, because you try and notify everybody that you're impacting, and you tell somebody it's going to be Thursday, and then you come back on Tuesday, it makes it even worse, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Spicklemeyer.
Motion to ward IFB twenty-five zero-one-six, Fifth Avenue Street Reconstruction, Second Avenue to Seventh Avenue, Project Knight River Corporation, Mountain West, amount of five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Spicklemeyer, second by Counselor Forsman to ward IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-six, Fifth Street Reconstruction, Second Avenue to Seventh Avenue, Project Knight River Corporation, Mountain West, in the amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky, and thank you, Director Johnson. Counsel, next up, we have item F, Council liaison appointment, considering appointment of Council Wright to the Public Works Advisory Board and Commission. This is an action item. I move to appoint Counsel Wright as the Council Liaison to the Public Works Advisory Board and Commission.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Forsman to appoint Counsel Wright as the Council Liaison to the Public Works Advisory Board and Commission. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Counselor Wright, for serving. We appreciate that very much. Next, we move to item G, ordinances, number one, second and third readings, item A, ordinance forty-nine forty-five, considering amending Lewiston City Code Sections thirty-one dash one oh eight, sub one A, and thirty-one dash one sixteen, sub one A relating to the mailing of the public hearing notices. This is an action item. If you need to hear from our city clerk, Tanya Brockie, she's here tonight, or I would entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Counsel Forsman.
Motion to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and combine the second and third reading of ordinance number forty-nine forty-five.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Forsman, second by Counsel President Kleberg to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and combine the second and third readings of ordinance forty-nine forty-five. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you, counsel. Counsel Forsman.
Motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine forty-five and approve the reading of the ordinance by title only.
Second.
By Counselor Forsman, second by Counsel President Kleberg to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine forty-five and approve the reading of the ordinance by title only. Is there discussion or amendments? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Clerk Rocky.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance forty-nine forty-five, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code Sections thirty-one dash one oh eight, one A, and thirty-one dash one sixteen, one A relating to the service of the public hearing notice and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselors, next we move to item two, adoption approval of ordinance summaries, item A, ordinance forty-nine forty-five. This is an action item.
Mayor.
Counsel Forsman.
Motion to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty-five and approve the related ordinance summary.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Forsman, second by Counsel President Kleberg to adopt ordinance forty-nine forty-five and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next, counsel, we move to Roman number nine, unfinished to new business. Item A, City Council comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently for the City Council or an item that may become before, may come before the City Council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselor Forsman.
I remember taking my first ride along, I believe it was my first one, with Captain Reese, and we did, they had the K-9 in the back, and he showed all of the drugs that the K-9s are able to find, and how much of a benefit it is to have our K-9 officers, and how much he wanted to expand that program, and so I'm really glad that that was able to happen, and I think it is highly necessary. Obviously, drugs have gone even higher, and with the fentanyl being out is far more dangerous than the drugs that I can remember when I was, when I was young. And I'm just, I'm glad, I can't remember, and forgive me, the first K-9 that you had, but I remember she was very, just as excited as the K-9s that we had in here today, and Ziva seems to be filling those shoes very well, and a wonderful K-9, and also her officer with her is a good K-9 handler, so appreciate the service between the K-9s that we have and our K-9 officers, and it is a vital thing that we have in this valley. Also, Pioneer Park, I've seen people playing on the equipment, and that's super exciting, so take your kids there if you have them, or fill someone else's kids with permission, and take them there and use that equipment. It's really nice equipment, and I'm glad to see it.
Counsel, other counsel comments. Counselor Klein.
We attended, me and my daughter attended the cool down with the cop in the park. It was a really fun event for the kids. Great job with the bouncy house. It was a big hit. Even gave dogs or puppies some puppy cups, so they were really happy about that.
Counsel President Kleberg.
Yeah, thank you. Speaking of Pioneer Park, I believe it's this Saturday that they're having the big picnic in the park.
Oh.
I can answer that if you like.
Thank you.
The Star Spangled Event, this is Saturday, ten to two, at Pioneer Park. We will have kind of a ribbon cutting and introduction of Justin at that event, so if you'd like to come, please do. It's going to be a great event.
What time?
What time was it?
Ten to two.
Ten to two.
Ten to two, okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Further counsel comments? Okay, we've done the city boards and commissions, liaisons and updates. Counsel President Kleberg.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we just discussed the MPO earlier, and they're sharing in our GIS information and stuff, I got a, kind of a late text from Rebecca that there is going to be a meeting here in town June twenty-fifth in Clarkston, at the Clarkston High School Library, is it four oh one Chestnut Street? And basically, it is Washington State Department of Transportation is going to discuss the study that they focused exclusively on the transportation impacts if Lower Snake River dams were removed. I know there's a lot of interest about these things in this town. I'm going to try and make it there, but they're, they've sort of all sorts of data and how they're going to, if the dams come out, how are we going to get around it with the transportation in and out of the valley? So again, that's June twenty-fifth from five to eight PM at the Clarkston High School Library.
Thank you, Counsel President Kleberg. Updates.
I have one.
Counselor Wright.
Yep, so the the DAC, we met last week. Some questions came up around the city optimization site, just how ease of use for the disabled community. And so there's some more information that we're getting to that committee to review regarding the progress of the site and where it's headed. And next up, there was also the voting in of a new president for that committee and a vice president. And there was some legal question around ADA requirements with crosswalks and crossing the street without crosswalks. I still need to follow up on, on that. And I believe that was, that was it.
Counselor. Counselor Schroder.
Well, I was going to talk about the MPO and the GSI that they're working with, paying with the city for the use of the GSI, right?
GIS.
GIS, okay, sorry. I was trying to find it in the notes. Anyway, come to find out, it's in our packet today, so I couldn't have done it before then anyway, but I was going to come and talk about that. But we already did.
Thank you, counselor. Just a reminder, too, we can find all these minutes on the website, too, and they're great reading. You can learn a lot about what's going on at other commissions and so forth. Further comments, anyone? No? Mayor comments? My comment, my only comment today is that I do want to give a shout out to one of our community development workers. I'm going to probably get the last name right, wrong. I got that wrong. Lori, is it Tangay or Tangway?
Tangway.
Tangway, okay. Lori Tangway works in our community department up front on prevention reviews and things like that, but I just want to compliment her. I had an opportunity to go into her office, and I was on the warpath, and she settled me down real quick. Did a great job answering the questions and done everything that was needed to do to get that permit moving, so I just want to say thank you to Lori and to her team for work. Thank them very much. Counsel, number D, agenda topics. And we'll move to Roman number ten, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved by Counsel Forsman, second by Counsel Schroder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.